Conference using Zoom pursuant to one MRSA section four oh three dash A. Welcome to the Stanford Planner Board meeting for March third, two thousand twenty-one. This meeting will come to order. This is a public proceeding and unless the board specifically votes to go into executive session, you have the right to hear everything that is being said and to look at all the exhibits that are offered. Please notify the chair if you are unable to see or hear something. Please note if any Planner Board members have any potential conflicts of interest of which they are aware, they will disclose the conflict prior to the board initiating a hearing or action on an application. All persons speaking will be asked to state your name and address and proceed. At the sole discretion of the chair, public testimony may be limited to five minutes per speaker. For each item, the applicant will be asked to describe the project. Thereafter, the chair will ask proponents of the project to speak, followed by opponents, and then those who are neither for nor against, but who may want to ask a question or make a general comment. Everyone who wants will have an opportunity to speak to the board through the chair. Any questions must go to and through the chair, who will then decide at what point to either ask staff or the applicant to respond. Chair may wait until after testimony has concluded, seeking answers to any questions that are raised by the public or board members. Please note that any rudeness, unsuitable behavior, clapping, cheering, booing, et cetera, will not be tolerated, and if those behaviors occur, the chair at his discretion may terminate the hearing and reschedule it for another day. In addition, the chair at his discretion will limit repetitious comments, although it is entirely appropriate for an individual to indicate that he or she agrees with the previous speaker. Prior to closing the public hearing, the chair will ask if there are any new comments. The applicant will be allowed to make a single rebuttal in response to the testimony which was provided. Once the public hearing portion of the meeting is closed, the chair will accept no additional public comment. However, a member of the board at the chair's discretion may ask the applicant or a member of the public to respond to a question. This will not reopen public comment. Planner Board decisions are based solely on whether an applicant has provided sufficient evidence to meet the requirements of local, state, and federal laws. In this regard, public testimony is most effective when it considers the impact of a project in light of Stanford subdivision, site plan, shoreline, or zoning ordinances and other relevant regulations. After the board votes on the merits of each project, it will vote on written findings of fact. This finding may substantially affect any appeal rights, and also as a matter of courtesy, the board asks that those attending the meeting not leave until the board has adopted the findings for the project they are interested in. After the Planner Board makes its final decision, any reconsideration by the board must be made at the next regularly scheduled meeting. Anyone wishes to appeal the board's final decision, he or she must do so within thirty days. City's ordinances and comprehensive plan are available for viewing on the city's website and in the Planning and Development Department's office at nine nineteen Main Street. Remember, this is a public proceeding. You have the right to hear, see, and hear everything that is happening, and we welcome public participation. Okay, um, I guess we're ready to do the roll call.
Tom?
Here.
Lenny?
Present.
Oliver?
Here.
Jack?
Here.
Diane?
Present.
Crystal?
Here.
And has Joe arrived? Okay, we have six of the seven members, and as I mentioned, Mr. Chair, uh, Joe Hanslip is planning to attend. He's just going to be a little bit delayed. Um, so if anybody does see when he arrives, if you could just make note of that um, so that I could record it for the minute, please. Thank you.
Okay, thanks. Okay, so the next item on our agenda is the minutes for February seventeenth, twenty... Should be twenty twenty-one. It's twenty twenty here on the agenda, but it should be twenty twenty-one, I guess.
Correct.
Um, do we have a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? If not, we can take a roll call vote.
Mr. Chair, who made the second on that motion?
On it, yes.
Thank you very much. Um, Tom?
Yes.
Uh, Lenny?
Yes.
Oliver?
Yes.
I believe, actually, Oliver, I don't believe you can vote because you were not at the meeting.
That's right, that's right. I stand.
That's okay. Thank you. Uh, Jack?
Yes.
Diane?
Yes.
Crystal?
Yes.
Okay, and my assumption is that Joe is still not here.
Okay.
Okay, uh, that motion passes five oh with one abstention.
Okay. All right, and that brings us to hearings and business. Item one is new, under new business, this is file R sixteen dash forty-one. This is CGA Solar LLC, Jack Kenworthy. And Beth, do you want to orient us on this?
Sure, I'm happy to do that. Um, uh, this is a major site plan for a utility scale solar project located at the former CGA site off of New Dam Road. Um, this is a brownfield site.
Shut the door on it, it's up.
All right, because they're starting to... I'm sorry. Excuse me, somebody needs to mute themselves. We're hearing a background noise in your house. Thank you. Um, uh, this is a brownfield site, um, and the city is, um, has prepared a cleanup, an assessment report, series of assessment reports, and a cleanup plan. Um, and the brownfields cleanup will be completed before construction of this project. Um, I think rather than going any further, I'll turn it back to you, Mr. Chair. I know that we have representatives here this evening who can present the project, and it is in order for a public hearing.
Okay. So, is Jack Kenworthy here tonight?
I don't believe Jack is on the call. Uh, my name is Dale Knapp. I'm with Boyle Associates. Uh, we are representing Walden in the permitting process here. Actually, I have my colleague on the line here, Matt Kennedy, and he can kind of provide an overview of the project if that's what the board would like.
Yeah, that would be great, Matt, um, whenever you're ready.
Hey, everyone. All right, so as Beth mentioned here, um, we're proposing a utility scale solar project along New Dam Road. Uh, it is approximately forty-five acres. On lot, that's forty-one, forty-one A, and a slight piece on forty-one B in the map, R sixteen. Uh, the entire project will have approximately thirty-nine acres of tree clearing. Uh, the capacity of this solar project will be roughly five megawatts AC. Uh, it will interconnect to the existing three-phase utility that is located on New Dam Road. The project, as it is over twenty acres in size, has, um, triggered the need for a Site Location Development Act permit with the Maine DEP that was filed in December, uh, December eleventh, twenty twenty, and was deemed complete for processing by the Maine DEP on December thirtieth, twenty twenty. Um, so as you know, the city owns one of the parcels on the northern end of the project. That is the brownfields remediation site. Uh, it's undergoing remediation currently, and I believe on the call here is a representative of the cleanup team, Charlie Springer from TRC, who can help provide any questions that we have regarding that. Um, so there will be some panels, and I can, I can just share my screen. I can show you a site plan. All right, can everybody see the screen I'm sharing?
Yep.
Great. All right, so this northern piece is where the remediation area is. Um, remediation project is occurring. And then there'll be a road that goes, we're proposing a road that goes along the western side of the parcel. Uh, and then towards the back end here, there'll be some more solar panels and racking systems. Uh, we've done a full wetland delineation on site. It's, the project is avoiding all impacts to resources and wetlands. So you can see there's a wetland down here. Um, there's this, another interesting part of this area here was, uh, this used to be an old gravel pit, and it was a part of a wetland mitigation project for the Maine Turnpike Authority. Uh, when they widened the turnpike in the late nineties, they impacted some wetlands, and, uh, in order to mitigate that loss of wetland habitat, this was converted into wetland. It was later deemed that the, the, um, mitigation was not successful, so it was replaced by a different mitigation project, I believe in Bitterford. But nonetheless, this was an under conservation easement. Um, this parcel by, uh, that's owned by Maine Turnpike Authority, and, uh, we have received some documentation, uh, from the DEP to allow that, this solar project, uh, to be built in the conservation easement, to be adjusted. As you can see, it's a new conservation easement is represented by this purple line that will be avoided by the project. So, um, there's a, this shaded area here is a deeded, it's going to be a de-restricted stormwater buffer, and there's some folks on the call from BH2M who helped, uh, design the stormwater system for the project. Um, so what the project uses is a store, a meadow buffer. Basically, we plant, you know, so mixture of native seeds, uh, seeds of native grasses, uh, after the panels are installed, and those grasses are allowed to grow up and provide a buffering of any type of stormwater. Um, the site is, will only be allowed by the Maine DEP to be mowed twice per year so that these, these grasses really can, can, uh, provide for good stormwater retention on the site. Uh, I believe we provided the stormwater management report with our application, um, and we've been in, you know, conversation with the members of the Site Plan Committee and, and the Fire Department and the Public Works Department in terms of, um, you know, just adding, I think, some pavement towards the front here, having enough sight lines, uh, adding a Knox box at both gates for the Fire Department. But, um, yeah, I guess, I guess that's, that's really all I have for introduction. Happy to take questions. Um, we got quite a few people on the call here today that should be able to answer those for you.
Okay, thanks. Um, I think at this point, we're going to declare the public hearing open, and we're going to ask if there's anybody who would like to speak in favor of this application. Uh, if they would like to use the raise your hand feature on Zoom. If there's anybody who would like to speak against the application? Or anybody that would like to make a comment, neither for nor against? Molly, can we see if there's anybody from the general public on there?
Oh, sorry, I was muted. I'm not seeing anyone, honey.
Okay. All right, so it doesn't look like there's any public comment at this point. I'll declare the public hearing closed. Um, let's see. If you want to go with any, uh, comments or questions on the Planner Board? Um, does anybody have a comment that they would like to make?
Mr. Chair?
Yeah.
Uh, I'd like to ask a few questions, if I may.
Yeah, go ahead.
Um, either to Matt or to Dale. Uh, good evening. Um, you say it's, uh, you're clearing thirty-nine acres of trees out of forty-five acres, is that correct?
I think the parcel in its entirety is closer to a hundred acres. Um, the CGA remediation site comprises a portion of the project, but the back lot, uh, it's, I think, about thirty-nine acres out of what, seventy-ish, Matt?
I don't have the, the total parcel size on, right offhand, but I think you're, yeah, I think that sounds about right, Dale.
Okay, my question basically was about the, um, after thirty to forty years, the give or take, um, you're going to be take decommissioning the site. And in your, um, information that you put in our packet, you talk about removing racks, removing solar panels, disassembling racks, electrical, and so on. You get to the bottom of your list, and it talks about seed disturbed areas. Nowhere on this list, uh, do I see anything about replanting any trees back, uh, to give something back to the land. Um, I was wondering if you could talk about, um, possibly, if you know already, your landscaping or disturbed area, um, plans further out.
Sure, so, once the decommissioning is complete, uh, the land would revert to the underlying owner of the parcel, uh, and so as, as described in the DEP permit and the materials that you saw, um, you know, the, the remaining control of that land would be left, um, to the underlying landowner. Um, and so the use of the site beyond, um, the facility is kind of beyond the control of the lease agreement that expires. And so if the, the land is left fallow, it would be, you know, reseeded by volunteer species if indeed, uh, the landowner left it to do so. So essentially, it'll be a meadow, then beyond the, the life of the lease agreement, the project no longer controls the use of that land.
Okay, um, I called, uh, about a month ago into your, uh, DEP meeting, just as a private citizen, and I asked you, you said you were going to revert the land back to the meadow area, and I asked if you were going to plant any trees then, and you said that you weren't, um, going to. Um, and I'm just wondering, you know, to be good stewards of the land, considering, uh, the contamination on certain parts of it, you know, is there something that maybe in, that you could contribute back to the future generation? Because in thirty to forty years, we're not going to be here, and someone else is going to be sitting in our seats, and they're going to have to contend with this.
Sure, I, I think that the meadow habitat itself, um, would be an improvement on especially the CGA site. Maybe Charlie, I think Springer is on from TRC, he might be able to speak to the remediation a little bit better. Um, but, um, outside of, uh, the remediation site itself on the back portion of that MTA parcel, um, you know, it, it's not, it's not a hardscape change. And so if the land is left, um, in meadow habitat and allowed to revert to timber, it would, it would return.
And, um, have you talked to the snowmobile club about rerouting them?
Yes, we have.
Okay, thank you very much, sir.
Okay, other questions or comments on the board?
This is Oliver. Uh, how much will Wallop be affected by this project?
We hope minimal. Um, currently, we're going through the process with Maine DEP and Maine Department of Inlet Fisheries and Wildlife under the site location review. Um, so, um, essentially, uh, there won't be, uh, again, hard, it's not a hardscape development, so the meadow underneath those panels would remain intact as habitat for use for, you know, small mammals and other species post-construction. Uh, we do have a plan in place to, uh, provide closure during construction to avoid risk of direct mortality through, uh, the use of a silt fence to essentially close out the construction area. Then, once the project is up, um, and running, the silt fence would be removed, and therefore, you know, from there, species would be allowed to kind of move back through the site and hopefully, um, use that habitat, um, post-construction. A very similar to what's happening at the Sanford Airport, right? Um, some similar approach.
And kind of follow-up question with that one. Uh, I'm not too knowledgeable on solar project stuff like that, but, uh, can wildlife damage to property, uh, by any chance?
Uh, the, the fence will be large enough to hopefully keep large mammals out. Um, they'll still be able to, you probably noticed on Matt's plan, they'll be able to sort of pass through the site still. Um, but, you know, small mammals will be able to pass in, pass out, you know, birds, other species, without issue. Um, we haven't seen wildlife, um, present a problem in terms of property damage on solar projects. They're inert and, um, sort of, they're very low impact in terms of, um, you know, natural resources.
Yeah, and I'll add on to that, that, uh, the fence that we're proposing is an agricultural-style fence. There's a, it's, the mesh is considerably larger than like, you know, it's probably about this big, uh, that allows smaller mammals to pass through, and there's usually a little gap underneath that smaller mammal that's going to pass through, uh, smaller than, it's larger mesh than like I say, a chain-link fence, and it also, uh, just is a better visual, visually, more visually appealing, appealing to those who are passing by.
Good point, Matt.
Thank you. Lenny, can I ask one more question, please?
Yeah, go ahead.
Um, are you going to have any barbed wire on the top of this fence?
No, definitely not. Um, so again, as Matt mentioned, it's kind of an agricultural-style fence. Uh, there's no barbed wire or razor wire of any kind. Uh, it's about eight feet tall, um, grated mesh, um, very similar to what you might see. Uh, well, maybe, Matt, you have a photo? Could pull up real quick? That might be helpful.
Is that eight-foot woven wire fencing?
Yep.
All right, that's what we have around the orchard here, if anyone's been up.
Yep, exactly, same thing.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, Tom, any comments?
No, I'm all set.
Okay, and Crystal?
Hi, thank you. I have a quick question. Can anyone hear me?
Yes.
Perfect, sorry. Um, can we go back to the Matt, the map that, um, Matt had up previously? My question is in regards to any residential area that's around this map and how any nearby residences would be impacted space-wise.
Here's that fence, uh, sorry, I had this up, so.
Oh.
But it'll be, it'll be cedar posts, um, just to give you an idea of what the fence, how large it will be. But anyway, I can pull up that site and land one second.
Yeah, there's a, there's a, um, a parcel between the project and any, um, residential development to the west of the site. Uh, you can kind of see that property line there. Um, so that's a
A little parcel.
A wooded buffer that falls between any residential development and the project itself.
I would like to add that, um, the, the applicant has, um, uh, provided a visual assessment um, in the application, and I've written a piece on that in the summary memo on page four. Um, the visual assessment said within the surrounding five miles that there's a low probability of potential visibility. Um, uh, so yeah, I would prefer to you to look at the, uh, summary memo and also the piece in their application about the visual assessment that was performed.
Perfect, thank you very much.
That map, it's in here, it'd be helpful just to get an idea of where it's visible, the surrounding area. But this purple area is where you're, where, where the public will have visibility. So it's like kind of on New Dam Road across from the pond. You're on the other side of the pond here, and then if you were going up the transmission line to the south of the project, but all the residences will have no visibility of the project.
Great, thank you so much.
Welcome.
Okay, this is Lenny. I have one question. Um, how deep are those posts going into the ground that the, uh, the cells are going to be mounted on? Is there any issue with penetrating the, uh, the top level of there?
For the, the CGA site or for the MTA site? I think there'd be, there'll be a different approach there. Maybe Charlie, could you weigh in on what would happen for the CGA site itself?
Yeah, for, again, these are two separate projects. The city is undertaking a remediation project, uh, through a EPA Brownfields grant, um, that is remediating the site, uh, prior to the project we're talking about here being executed. Uh, the intention is to leave that site as a clean site, uh, across the vast majority of it. There will be a berm up on the New Dam roadside, the north side of the site, where we are going to pile, uh, and cap and cover, uh, some contaminated material. Put, put it there in perpetuity, put a de-destruction on the site that, uh, identifies that it's there. Uh, this is all being done, uh, already been permitted and approved by Maine DEP and EPA. Um, but again, for, as far as construction of a solar site, uh, you can drive panels, uh, anywhere. We, we intend the, the ground to be as clean and, you know, a massive improvement to what the site is currently out there, which, which is a bit of a mess. Um, so, you know, the net gain here for the city is huge. Um, but, Lenny, does that answer your question?
Um, yeah, I believe it does. Okay, thanks.
Chair?
Yeah?
This is Beth. I just want to point out that Keith Lavasser is, from the Sanford Water District, is here if any of the board members have any questions for him.
Hi, Diane, are you talking?
Can you hear me now?
Sure.
Okay, sorry about that. Um, Director, the fencing along New Dam, that is different than what they're proposing around the rest of the site, correct?
Uh, did you direct that to question the bear?
Yeah, um, because I think it was done before, um, the current applicant came in.
I think we temporarily lost bail, she froze for a second, so she's probably trying to get back in.
Yeah, actually, I've been booted out of both my files and, uh, the Zoom meeting, so I do have my phone connection, one of the virtues of connecting separately by phone. Diane, could you repeat that question, please?
Yeah, um, before the applicant, um, started with, uh, the solar project, um, there was some fencing that was along New Dam, right where the berms and everything were going to be where the contamination is. That is different fencing, yes?
Than what will be put in place?
Yes.
Yes.
Yeah, so let me, this is Charlie from TRC. Let me jump in here, Beth.
Yep.
A requirement around the berm itself, uh, will be to restrict public access. Um, that, that will be a different fencing than what was shown before. Uh, and that's a requirement of DEP to be protective of human health. So there, there will be a, uh, a different fence around the berm. But again, that's not the entire CGA parcel. Uh, that's the, the berm proper. But as I understand it, and, and Dale or Matt, correct me if I'm wrong, your, your panels are not actually extending onto the berm. Um, they're staying on the, the clean, uh, ground. Um, so there should be no interference with, uh, the solar development project.
Okay, thank you very much. I just wanted to double-check that. Thank you.
And, Mr. Chair, I'm sorry, I'm still not able to get back into either, uh, my files or onto the Zoom platform, but I will stay connected with you by phone, and I'll do the best I can to continue to take notes. Molly, you may have to step in and help because I don't, I'm not able to even see the findings file or the site plan recommendation at this point, so I can't read those things like I normally do. I'll keep, I'll keep trying.
Okay. Um, I have one quick question. This, so this is all dependent on the city finishing the remediation project, is that correct?
That's a big part of it.
That's a good question for Matt Hill.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Sorry, Matt?
Uh, I, the question, is it all dependent? I, you know, certainly development of the back portion doesn't hinge on the front portion, I would say. Um, but yeah, it's, it's, ever since Maine DEP agreed to clean up the three solid acres of, it's been a, a problem for the city to try to get the rest of that, uh, taken care of. And with this upcoming solar, it's great motivation to get the rest of it done. Um, you know, as you may or may not be aware, that existing site was just really unregulated before, and, uh, I would say, I would venture now that it's, it is in better shape. I would say, I would venture now that it's, it is in better shape. But it was like the Wild West out there before and you've got, you know, concrete tanks spread in amongst trees, uh. The cities just have the darnedest time even quantifying the work that needs to be done out there, you know? Charlie, you can speak to that a little bit, but it's, you know, nobody yet has gone out there and done, I, I mean, have you done an inventory, like exactly how many containers need to be removed or exactly how much needs to go?
There, there, as we've just, so right now where the remediation project sits is we are working with the city and, um, a few of the bid respondents to, uh, come to terms on pricing. Um, the, the initial prices that came back were quite high. The city has been very generous and trying to work to find money in different places, which is extremely hard in this, in this time, uh, to actually, you know, get this site cleaned up. Again, that had, that's somewhat separate, that is separate from the solar development project. Uh, this site has been a thorn in the city's side for many, many years. And here now with EPA Brownfields grant is the opportunity for the city to clean this up and do something with the site and put it back into productive use. Um, yes, uh, you know, falling on the heels of the remediation project is the solar development project. But again, to be clear, those are two separate items and the, the city's, uh, desire to clean this site up goes back ten, fifteen, twenty years. And here we are finally at the precipice about to be able to complete that.
Much better said than me, Charlie. I retract all my comments. I'm going to go with Charlie's.
Okay, thanks. Hey, is the committee good? Any, any other comments or anybody want to jump in with something or are we ready to move on to the next step?
And, Mr. Chair, I am back, uh, connected.
I see you at the bottom of the screen. Okay. Do we have a finding, a fact for this one?
Yes, we do.
Okay.
Uh, would you like me to go through it with you?
I guess if everybody's ready to move on, I guess we can start with that.
Okay. Um, so we may as well start with the combinations first. Um, there aren't an awful lot of them. Uh, the first one is, uh, there are three of them that are not applicable. Two eighty dash sixteen dash seven point nine relating to sewer. Two eighty dash sixteen dash seven point thirteen relating to lighting. And two eighty dash sixteen dash seven point sixteen, uh, relating to shore land. And so give me just a moment here and I will read those to you. Um, alright, so the first one is two eighty dash sixteen dash seven point nine sewage disposal. Uh, the recommendation is that the standard is not applicable. The explanation is that the project is outside of the coverage area, um, for, um, the sewage district. Um, the second one, go ahead.
Nope, I was, I was jumping the gun.
Yeah, thank you. The second one is two eighty dash sixteen dash seven point thirteen exterior lighting. And again, the recommendation is that the standard is not applicable, uh, because no exterior lighting is proposed. And then the third one is, uh, two eighty dash, uh, sixteen dash seven point sixteen shoreline relationship. And the recommendation is that the standard is not applicable because no improvements are proposed within the shoreline zone.
Motion to accept, Tom.
Second, Crystal.
Mr. Chair, who got it?
Um, I heard Diane first.
I think, yeah, it was Diane.
Okay, and roll call vote?
Uh, yeah, so, Tom?
Yes.
Lenny?
Yes.
Oliver?
Yes.
Jack?
Yes.
Diane?
Yes.
And Crystal?
Yes.
So the vote is six oh. Motion passes. Um, the next combination is, um, uh, two eighty dash sixteen dash seven point six stormwater. Uh, and the second one is erosion control, two eighty dash sixteen dash seven point seven. And I will get to those, um, two eighty dash sixteen dash seven point six stormwater management. The recommendation is that the standard is met with condition. With the condition that plans are revised to address the city engineer's concerns about stormwater velocities and erosion controls are the satisfaction of the city engineer, the standard is met. Two eighty dash sixteen dash seven point seven erosion control, uh, similarly recommended that it's met with condition with the same explanation.
Motion to accept, Tom.
Second, Crystal.
Ooh.
I heard Oliver, I heard Oliver first.
Okay.
And we're ready for a vote.
Okay, Tom?
Yes.
Lenny?
Yes.
Oliver?
Yes.
Jack?
Yes.
Diane?
Yes.
And Crystal?
Yes.
Motion passes six oh. Um, and let's see, that'll be the same here, so hold on just a moment while I make a note. Um, the next one, we're gonna start at the top. Uh, everything else is a single, um, item. Two eighty dash sixteen dash seven point one utilization of the site. The recommendation is that the standard is met with condition. The explanation is that with the condition that the applicant provides copies of the approved D E P, Army Corps and other permits from outside agencies to the planning department, the standard is met.
Motion to accept, Tom.
Second, Crystal.
We just go to everybody?
Mr. Chair, who got it?
I think everybody had it, um.
Pick me, pick me.
Okay, we'll pick Crystal.
Oh, gosh.
Okay, I guess we're ready for a vote.
Okay, Tom?
Yes.
Lenny?
Yes.
Oliver?
Yes.
Jack?
Yes.
Diane?
Yes.
And Crystal. The next one is two eighty dash, uh, thank you, I should have waited for that, sorry about it. Two eighty dash sixteen dash seven point two access to, I'm sorry, that motion passed six oh. Two eighty dash sixteen dash seven point two access to the site. The recommendation is that the standard is met and the explanation is that site distances appear to be adequate on New Dam Road. New Dam Road has adequate capacity to accommodate traffic generated.
Motion to accept, Tom.
Second, Diane.
And a vote?
Uh, Tom?
Yes.
Um, Lenny?
Yes.
Oliver?
Yes.
Jack?
Yes.
Diane?
Yes.
And Crystal?
Yes.
Motion passes six oh. Two eighty dash sixteen dash seven point three access into the site. Um, the recommendation is that the standard is met with condition. The explanation is that with the condition that the work zone traffic is managed in accordance with M U T C D, the standard is met.
Motion to accept, Tom.
Second, Oliver.
And roll call vote?
Tom?
Yes.
Lenny?
Yes.
Oliver?
Yes.
Jack?
Yes.
Diane?
Yes.
And Crystal?
Yes.
Uh, motion passes six oh. Next one is two eighty dash sixteen dash seven point four internal vehicular circulation. The recommendation is that the standard, um, has been met. The explanation is that access roads will be used primarily for maintenance. No additional traffic beyond that associated with construction and periodic maintenance is anticipated on site.
Motion to accept, Tom.
Second, Diane.
And a vote?
Tom?
Yes.
Lenny?
Yes.
Oliver?
Yes.
Jack?
Yes.
Diane?
Yes.
Crystal?
Yes.
Motion passes six oh. Uh, the next one is two eighty dash sixteen dash seven point five pedestrian circulation. The recommendation is that the standard is met with condition. The explanation is that with the condition that typical construction sections for proposed trail replacement is provided to the satisfaction of the city engineer, the standard is met.
Motion to accept, Tom.
Second, Crystal.
And a vote?
Tom?
Yes.
Lenny?
Yes.
Oliver?
Yes.
Jack?
Yes.
Diane?
Yes.
Crystal?
Yes.
Motion passes six oh. Um, the next one is two eighty dash sixteen dash seven point eight water supply. The recommendation is that the standard is met with condition. Um, the, uh, explanation is that with the condition that ponds on site are maintained in the event that water demands exceed current supply and the well is put back into productive, into production as an emergency backup supply, the standard is met.
Motion to accept, Tom.
Second, Oliver.
And a roll call vote?
Tom?
Yes.
Lenny?
Yes.
Um, Oliver?
Yes.
Jack?
Yes.
Diane?
Yes.
And Crystal?
Yes.
Motion passes six oh. The next one is two eighty dash sixteen dash seven point ten utilities. The recommendation is that the standard is met with condition. The explanation is that with the condition that plans are revised to identify the placement of a knock box on the gate of the project area and keys to the gate and any additional locks on the property are supplied, the standard is met.
Motion to accept, Tom.
Second, Crystal.
And a roll call vote?
Tom?
Yes.
Lenny?
Yes.
Oliver?
Yes.
Jack?
Yes.
Diane?
Yes.
And Crystal?
Yes.
Motion passes six oh. Next one is two eighty dash sixteen dash seven point eleven natural features. Um, the recommendation is that the standard is met with condition. Um, the explanation is that with the condition that the applicant addressed the city engineer's questions regarding soil capacity and the potential presence of soft organic materials beneath the gravel surface to the satisfaction of the city engineer, the standard is met.
Motion to accept, Tom.
Second, Diane.
And a vote?
Um, Tom?
Yes.
Lenny?
Yeah.
Oliver?
Yes.
Jack?
Yes.
Diane?
Yes.
And Crystal?
Yes.
Motion passes six oh. Next one is two eighty dash sixteen dash seven point twelve groundwater protection. The recommendation is that the standard is met with condition. The explanation is that the project is on the edge of the wetland, excuse me. The project is on the edge of the wellhead protection zone. However, the property itself is not in the delineated wellhead zone. The applicant has provided submittals to the water district that would be required for activity within the wellhead zone. With continued coordination, uh, with the water district, the standard is met.
Motion to accept, Tom.
Second, Oliver.
And a roll call vote?
Um, Tom?
Yes.
Lenny?
Yes.
Oliver?
Yes.
Jack?
Yes.
Diane?
Yes.
And Crystal?
Yes.
Motion, motion passes six oh. Uh, the next one is two eighty dash sixteen dash seven point fourteen solid waste disposal. The recommendation is that the standard is met with condition. The explanation is that once construction is complete, no solid waste will be generated on site with the provision of the decommissioning bond to accompany the approved decommissioning plan, which specifies that materials removed upon decommissioning will be disposed of in conformance with the main solid waste requirement. The standard is met.
Motion to accept, Tom.
Second, Crystal.
And a vote?
Um, Tom?
Yes.
Uh, Lenny?
Yes.
Oliver?
Yes.
Jack?
Yes.
Diane?
Yes.
Crystal?
Yes.
Motion passes six oh. Um, the next one is two eighty dash sixteen dash seven point fifteen landscaping. The recommendation is that the standard is met with condition. The explanation is that with the condition that the seeding of herbaceous species established vegetated meadow conditions is completed by September fifteen, twenty twenty-one, the standard is met. If seeding takes place after this deadline, the applicant will provide a performance guarantee in an amount to cover labor and materials. With that requirement, the standard is met.
Motion to accept, Tom.
Second, Diane.
And a vote?
Tom?
Yes.
Lenny?
Yes.
Oliver?
Yes.
Jack?
Yes.
Diane?
Yes.
And Crystal?
Yes.
Motion passes six oh. Uh, two eighty dash sixteen dash seven point seventeen technical and financial capacity. Uh, the recommendation is that the standard is met. The explanation is that the applicant has demonstrated adequate technical and financial capacity.
Motion to accept, Tom.
Second, Crystal.
And a vote?
Um, Tom?
Yes.
Lenny?
Yes.
Oliver?
Yes.
Jack?
Yes.
Diane?
Yes.
And Crystal?
Yes.
Motion passes six oh. The next one is two eighty dash sixteen dash seven point eighteen buffering. Uh, the recommendation is that the standard is met with condition. The explanation is that with the condition that a ten-foot clear zone around the perimeter of the fence is identified off a plan and a note is added indicating that the clear zone will be maintained for year-round emergency access, the standard is met.
Motion to accept, Tom.
Second, Diane.
And a vote?
Um, Tom?
Yes.
Lenny?
Yes.
Uh, Oliver?
Yes.
Jack?
Yes.
Diane?
Yes.
And Crystal?
Yes.
Motion passes six oh. And the last one, two eighty dash sixteen dash seven point nineteen airport encroachment. The recommendation is that the standard is met. The explanation is that the applicant has provided an FAA determination of no hazard to air navigation aeronautical study letter and is to the satisfaction of the Sanford, um, municipal airport manager.
Motion to accept, Tom.
Second, Crystal.
Your call, Mr. Mayor, Mr. Chair?
Mr.
Um, how about, how about Crystal on that one?
Okay, good. Alrighty. Um, do you guys get prizes, who gets the most motions?
Tom wins by far.
Okay, so it was Morgan and, uh, Kenny. Okay, cool. Um, are you ready for the vote?
Sure.
Okay, Tom?
Yes.
Lenny?
Yes.
Oliver?
Yes.
Jack?
Yes.
Diane?
Question?
Yeah?
Did I miss something here or my phone not working? Suggested motion? Before the vote?
Yeah, Tom made, it, there's no motion on approval at this point. We're just working on the last finding.
I'm sorry.
We're still on the finding of facts.
Yeah, my apologies. Um, my answer is yes.
Okay, uh, and then, uh, Crystal?
Yes.
Great, motion passes six oh. Mr. Chair, are you ready for a draft motion?
Yeah, now we can have that suggested motion.
Okay, and it's very slightly modified from what was in your packet. Uh, it just includes reference to the site plan review committee recommendations. So the, the draft motion is that the site plan review committee recommend, uh, excuse me. Should be changed, hold on, please. The planning board, um, accepts the information in the February accepts the information in the February twenty five twenty twenty one summary report, and March second twenty twenty one site plan review committee recommendation, grants the requested waivers, and finds that the proposed major site plan for the utility scale solar energy system application file, R sixteen dash forty one, to construct a five megawatt grid scale solar energy generating generation facility on property owned by um, the city and main turnpike authority and located at two twenty nine New Dam Road, has satisfied the requirements of Article sixteen of the zoning ordinance, subject to the submission of information and conditions described below. By March seventeenth, and as other arrangements are made with the planning director, provide five copies of revised plans to the planning department that adequately respond to issues raised in the review which are part of the following conditions of approval. A, one A is to provide a typical construction sections for proposed trail replacements. B, to revise plans to address city engineers' concerns about stormwater velocities and erosion control to the satisfaction of the city engineer. C, to revise plans to identify placement of a knock box on the beat of the project area, identify a ten foot clear zone around the perimeter of the fence, and add a note indicating that the clear zone will be maintained for year round emergency access. Two, to address the city engineer's questions about soil capacity and potential presence of soft organic material beneath the gravel surface to his satisfaction. Three, to work, provide work zone traffic in accordance with the manual on uniform traffic control devices. Four, to provide keys to the gate and any additional locks on the property. Five, to provide an AutoCAD submission tied to the main state coordinate system which is acceptable to the city engineer. Six, to supply a copy of the approved main department of environmental protection, US Army Corps of Engineers, and any other permits from outside agencies to the planning department once secured, along with a copy of the approved plan if it differs from the one approved by the planning board, a written description of any changes, and be prepared to seek an amendment to planning board approval should the DEP, Army Corps, or other agencies require a modification of the plan. Seven, to establish an inspection escrow fee with the public works department in an amount acceptable to the city engineer. Eight is to set up a pre-construction conference with the code enforcement director and the city engineer. Nine is, if installation of approved landscaping is not completed by September fifteen twenty twenty one, the end of the growing season, the applicant shall be required to provide a performance guarantee in an amount to cover the cost of the landscape material and its installation. The guarantee shall be required to stay in force for one full growing season after installation. And ten, this approval is dependent on and limited to the documents and plans contained in the application submitted and affirmed to by the applicant. No project plan or development previously approved by the planning board may be altered or modified without securing prior approval of the planning board in the form of an amendment. Provided, however, that if at any time it becomes necessary or desirable to make modifications to the development, the planning director may approve minor modifications. Any changes to the approved plan shall be provided to the planning department prior to construction to evaluate whether an amendment of the approval is required. The applicant shall be aware that noncompliance with this condition may require modification of construction elements that are not consistent with the approval, may delay release of all or portions of a performance guarantee, and may result in a stop work order.
Motion to accept, Jack. Second, Tom. Jack can have it.
Jack can have it, okay. Uh, hold on, I'm trying to catch up with you guys. You're going too fast for me today. So, it was Jack and Tom, alrighty. Any further discussion? Lenny, are you ready for a vote? Do we move? No. Lenny? Lenny, are you ready for a vote? Lenny? Yeah, I think so, and I think we just lost him. Um, I'm going to, unless anybody has any concerns from, uh, Lenny, are you back?
Hi.
Hi, are you ready for a vote?
I think so.
Okay, um, Tom?
Yes.
Lenny?
Yes.
Oliver?
Yes.
Jack?
Yes.
Diane?
My vote is yes.
Thank you. Um, and Crystal?
Yes.
Motion passes six oh. Okay.
Okay, good luck. Thank you all very much for that.
Thanks for your time. Appreciate you giving us that support.
Thanks, have a good night. Okay, are we ready for the next one?
If you are, Mr. Chair.
Is everybody Zoom working all right? Because things seem to be freezing up a little bit. I'm not sure if it's just me or everybody else, but...
You're special, Lenny. It's just you.
Oh, thank you.
I second that, Diane.
Okay. All right, I think we're ready for new business. This is file. If I can read it, file R twelve dash forty five A. This is for Robert and Cecile Poliquin. This is care of Dana Libby, Corner Post Land Surveying. And Beth, do you want to get us acclimated on this?
Um, uh, I'm sorry, I'm, I'm, I'm really juggling this stuff. So, this is a minor site plan for a private way on property that's located at three thirty six Alfred Road. Uh, tax map, um, and lot R twelve dash forty five A. Um, I think at this point I'll just stop. This is in order for a public hearing. Um, I know that the, um, uh, the consultant for the, um, applicant is here, Dana Libby from Corner Post Land Surveying, and I think he could probably provide a better real view of the project along with, um, uh, obviously he's now sharing his screen just so that you can actually see the plan itself.
Hi Dana, how you doing?
Good evening. Uh, for those that don't know, know me, yeah, my name's Dana Libby from Corner Post Land Surveying, uh, representing Mr. and Mrs. Parklin, uh, who are proposing to a private way on property they own on the west side of Alfred Road. The ro, the proposed, uh, private way will access two lots. The existing house, which is the Naughtley house, uh, their daughter currently lives in, and they're selling that lot to their daughter, and they want to build a new home, um, on lot, lot A. Uh, as part of the application process, uh, Matt Hill determined that, and, and Jamie Paul determined that we needed to consolidate the driveways. So, we're proposing a disconnect of the existing driveway, and then a new connection to the proposed private way. Uh, there had also been some discussions about the curb cut and the ability to allow the private way where it's at. Uh, I think we resolved all that at, uh, State Plan. Uh, also, we've addressed, uh, I believe we've addressed all the concerns in the memos and from site plan. Uh, issued some new plans to the planning department and for Matt's review. Uh, and they can tell you if we've made, made all those changes. Uh, other than that, I think I'm willing to take any questions.
Okay, sounds good. Uh, we're not, we don't need a public hearing on this, is that right, Beth?
Um, uh, ooh, ooh. Yes, a public hear, yes, a public hearing notice was listed in the paper. Um, from what I've seen, I have not received any email correspondence or any phone calls from our butters. Um, so, Lenny, or Mr. Chair, if you'd like to, um, ask if any members of the public are in, in the meeting this evening.
Yeah, we can do that, I guess. We'll clear the public hearing open. Uh, if there's any, let's say, I don't see any extra names online here, but if there's anybody who would like to make a, a comment in favor of this application, uh, feel free to speak or use the raise your hand feature on Zoom. Um, any comments, uh, against the application? Or any comments either for nor against? Okay, not hearing any, I'll declare the public hearing closed. Any comments or questions from the planning board? Okay, I've got one question. Um, is there any future development plans, um, behind the proposed house?
No, the lot area for this parcel is just above what's required for two lots, so there can never be any more additional lots here.
Okay.
Uh, Mr. Chair, do you, do you want, uh, our report on the, the engineering things that Dana mentioned?
Yeah, go ahead.
Uh, yeah, so, uh, Matt Preventer and I have, have reviewed this as well as the ordinance and, uh, you know, the reduction from an existing driveway and a private way down to just the private way, I think, uh, in the long run is, is a pretty fair compromise with the applicant, applicant. It's a, you know, it's better access management practice, uh, so that's looked upon favorably. Um, when it really came down to it though, uh, there's kind of a long discussion with the code officer about the location of the driveway in relation to Gerard Street. Uh, Sanford has, um, kind of a clear code about driveway separation, but does not speak as clearly as main DOT does about offsets from driveways on the opposite side of the street. So Gerard Street has about twelve residences that, on it right now, and, uh, this one, you know, it's marked on the plan fifty-four feet from center line to center line. Um, I think it, usually it's, it's, um, when you talk about driveway offsets, it's from, uh, you know, point of tangency or throat to throat. So, uh, this one is a little bit offset. Uh, of course, there's not going to be a lot of high traffic from the proposed parcels, but, uh, Alfred Road is through four, which is a minor arterial. Um, and it has a crash history. It is not particularly a head crash location. Uh, but there were some concerns there, so I think, I think it's important to note that, you know, if this were main DOT standards, which is not, because it is inside the urban compact, uh, that driveway would be too close, but I would, I guess I would also note that the existing driveway would be too close to Gerard Street. Um, but again, that's all DOT standards, and where this is the urban compact, it, it is Sanford's jurisdiction. Uh, so Sanford is kind of silent in the, in the code a little bit about, uh, accesses on the opposite side of the street. But again, we felt it was a pretty fair compromise taking the two proposed accesses down to one.
Okay. Um, any other members of the planning board who'd like to make a comment or a staff? Okay, well, it sounds pretty quiet out there, so I guess, thanks Beth, we can take action on this.
Alrighty, are you ready for the finding?
Sure.
Okay. So, there are a bunch in the not applicable category, um, uh, I'm going to go through them one at a time, so give me just a second and I will get the, uh, numbers in front of me, and then I'll read them all to you at, at the same time. Alrighty, so, uh, the first one in the category of not applicable is, uh, two eighty, um, dash sixteen dash seven point eight, uh, which is water supply. The recommendation is that the standard is not applicable because the private way, excuse me, the proposed private way does not utilize, um, uh, public water. Um, the next one is two eighty dash sixteen dash seven point nine sewage disposal. Um, the recommendation is, again, the standard is not applicable. The explanation is that the proposed private way does not use, uh, public sewage. The next one is two eighty dash sixteen dash seven point twelve, which is groundwater. Again, recommendation is that it is not applicable, and the explanation is that there will be no discharges from the project proposed to enter the groundwater system. Um, the next one is two eighty dash sixteen dash seven point thirteen exterior lighting. Again, recommended not applicable, there's no exterior lighting is being proposed. Um, next one is two eighty dash sixteen dash seven point fifteen landscaping. Um, and again, recommendation is that it's not applicable, um, because other than site stabilization after construction, there is no proposed landscaping associated with the private way. Next one is two eighty dash sixteen dash seven point sixteen shoreline relationship. Um, the recommendation again is that it's not applicable because no improvements are proposed within the shoreline district. Um, the next one is two eighty dash sixteen dash, uh, excuse me, dash seven point eighteen buffering. Again, the recommendation is that the standard's not applicable because there's no proposed buffering, uh, buffering associated with the private way. And then the last one in this category is two eighty, um, dash sixteen dash seven point nineteen airport encroachment. Again, not applicable because the site is not in the airport zone.
Motion to accept, Tom.
Second.
Hmm, I heard Oliver first. I, I heard Oliver first.
Oliver, okay, thank you.
And we're ready for a vote, I guess.
Okay, Tom?
Yes.
Lenny?
Yes.
Oliver?
Yes.
Jack?
Yes.
Diane?
Yes.
Crystal?
Yes.
And the motion passes six oh. Um, let's see, what's left for combinations, um. And then we've got two more combinations, um, that I can pick up here. Alrighty, so it, the first one is two eighty dash sixteen dash seven point six stormwater. Um, the recommendation is that the standard is met with condition. Um, uh, the explanation is that with the condition that the applicant revised the application and plan set to meet items detailed in the city engineer's memo to the satisfaction of the city engineer, the standard is met. The next one is two eighty dash sixteen dash seven point seven erosion control. Again, the recommendation is that the standard is met with condition for the same explanation. Um, and then the next one goes all the way into the next section, um, which is, hold on, I'm scrolling, two eighty dash sixteen dash seven point twenty point, uh, three, um, which is minimum standards. So, again, the recommendation is that the standard is met with condition, and the explanation is that with the, the same explanation that with the condition rebu, that the applicant revised the application plan set to meet the issues, uh, items detailed in the city engineer's memo to the satisfaction of the city engineer, the standard is met.
Motion to accept, Tom.
Second, Crystal.
And a roll call vote.
Tom?
Yes.
Lenny?
Yes.
Oliver?
Yes.
Jack?
Yes.
Diane?
Yes.
And Crystal?
Yes.
Motion passes six oh. And now we're going to go back to the top and pick up the singles. Two eighty dash sixteen dash seven point one utilization of the site. The recommendation is that the standard is met with condition. Explanation is that with the condition that a note is added to the plan detailing that lot B will allocate acreage to lot A to meet the maximum net residential density standard. Clarification that proposed minimum frontage meets, clarification that the proposed minimum frontage meets the clarification that the proposed minimum frontage meets the ordinance requirement of 250 feet and that the, and I'm going to change that because that was already resolved. Hold on just a second. If I could start reading that once again, I'd appreciate it. With the condition that a note is added to the plan detailing that Lot B will allocate acreage to Lot A to meet the maximum net residential density standard and that the revised plan and, and revise, revised the plans to include a name for the private way which is approved by the code enforcement officer, the standard is met.
Motion to accept, Tom.
Second, Diane.
And we're ready for a vote.
Uh, Tom?
Yes.
Lenny?
Yes.
Oliver?
Yes.
Jack?
Yes.
Diane?
Yes.
And Crystal?
Yes.
Motion passes 6-0. 280 dash 16 dash 7.2 access to the site. Recommendation is that the standard is met with condition. Explanation is that with the condition that plans are revised, I'm sorry, I'm editing this as we go along here based upon the conversation, um, are revised to provide a shared driveway. The access point, uh, the standard is met.
Motion to accept, Tom.
Second, Oliver.
Okay, and then we're ready for a vote.
Um, Tom?
Yes.
Lenny?
Yes.
Oliver?
Yes.
Jack?
Yes.
Diane?
Yes.
And Crystal?
Yes.
Motion passes 6-0. 280 dash 16 dash 7.3 access into the site. Recommendation is that the standard is met with condition. The explanation is that with the condition, well, and this one's gonna have to stop here, just a second. With the condition that road construction not take place in the winter months, the standard is met.
Motion to accept, Tom.
Second, Crystal.
And a roll call vote.
Tom?
Yes.
Um, Lenny?
Yes.
Oliver?
Yes.
Jack?
Yes.
Diane?
Yes.
And Crystal?
Yes.
Motion passes 6-0. Next one is 280 dash 16 dash 7.4 internal vehicular circulation. Recommendation is that the standard is met with condition. The explanation is that with the condition that the private way and hammerhead turnaround be maintained and kept clear year round to provide access for emergency vehicles, the standard is met.
Motion to accept, Tom.
Second, Crystal.
I heard Diane first on that one.
Okay. Are you ready for a roll call?
Sure.
Tom?
Yes.
Lenny?
Yes.
Oliver?
Yes.
Jack?
Yes.
Diane?
Yes.
And Crystal?
Yes.
Motion passes 6-0. 280 dash 16 dash 7.5 pedestrian circulation. The recommendation is that the standard is met. The explanation is that only pedestrians associated with the proposed single-family home are anticipated onsite and are provided with adequate parking and safe passage from the private way to the proposed home.
Motion to accept, Tom.
Second, Crystal.
And a roll call vote.
Tom?
Yes.
Lenny?
Yes.
Oliver?
Yes.
Jack?
Yes.
Diane?
Yes.
And Crystal?
Yes.
Motion passes 6-0. Get to go all the way down to 280 dash 16 dash 7.10 utilities. The recommendation is that the standard is met. The explanation is that the proposed overhead electric telephone and cable utilities meet the standard.
Motion to accept, Tom.
Second, Diane.
And a roll call vote.
Tom?
Yes.
Lenny?
Yes.
Oliver?
Yes.
Jack?
Yes.
Diane?
Yes.
And Crystal?
Yes.
Motion passes 6-0. Next one is 280 dash 16 dash 7.11 natural features. The recommendation is that the standard is met with condition. The explanation is that with the condition that the applicant, um, I'm gonna have to change this, um, because, uh, uh, there is not a, Dana, just confirm for me that there is not an NRPA permit required. I don't believe there is one.
That's correct, there's not.
Okay, I'm going to, uh, change this on the fly, uh, folks, so if it, if it needs some modification, um, let's, let's do that. Um, uh, the proposed private way has been designed to, um, avoid sensitive natural features.
Motion to accept.
Second, Oliver.
And a roll call vote.
Okay. One second, my hands just flipped away from me here. Um, uh, Tom?
Yes.
Um, Lenny?
Yes.
Um, Oliver?
Yes.
Jack?
Yes.
Diane?
Yes.
And Crystal?
Yes.
Motion passes 6-0. 280 dash 16 dash 7.14 solid waste. Um, the recommendation is that the standard is met with condition. The explanation, um, is, uh, that the city of Sanford does not provide curbside pickup on a private street. Solid waste will be removed by the landowner or a private vendor to the city transfer station.
Motion to accept, Tom.
Second, Oliver.
And a roll call vote.
Tom?
Yes.
Lenny?
Yes.
Oliver?
Yes.
Jack?
Yes.
Diane?
Yes.
And Crystal?
Yes.
Motion passes 6-0. 280 dash 16 dash 7.17 technical and financial capacity. The recommendation is that the standard is met. The explanation is that the applicant has just demonstrated adequate, um, technical and financial capacity.
Motion to accept.
Second, Crystal.
Your call, Lenny.
Uh, I heard Diane first on that one. And I guess we're ready for a vote.
Tom?
Yes.
Lenny?
Yes.
Oliver?
Yes.
Jack?
Yes.
Diane?
Yes.
And Crystal?
Yes.
Okay, thank you, Crystal. Um, so that motion passes 6-0. Uh, we're down to 280 dash 16 dash 7.20, um, point 1. Um, no more than one dwelling unit and related accessory buildings and uses. Um, the recommendation that the, is that the standard is met and the explanation is that there are no residences currently on the property and any future development will be limited to one development, one dwelling unit.
Motion to accept.
Uh, Beth, I'd like to make a correction on that.
Okay.
There is a, there is a residence on the property.
Okay, thank you. Um, so, uh, this, sorry, um, to jump in here, but, uh, this, I, it was referencing, um, the lot between the, the lot division, so the, the lot that the, uh, new proposed residence is being built on. Um, is it fair to say that there are no residences currently on the property that would be served by the private way?
Well, they're both being served by the private way, so I, I guess, I guess a correct statement would be no more than one residence, uh, per lot.
Okay. Let me try getting this down here and I'll try reading it again. Okay, my recommendation would be to change the language as follows. Um, and it certainly can be worked on some more if it doesn't meet the bill. Um, I since we've said that the explanation is that no more than one residence will be allowed on each of the lots served by the private way.
Motion to accept.
Do we need to withdraw the motion that was already there?
I agree.
Uh, you can, rather than doing that, what you, you can do is you can amend it or you can, you can, both people can retract it and then it could be a new motion.
Hmm. I can retract it, because I don't think there was a second anyways.
Yeah, no, there wasn't.
Okay. So on this, so are you making a motion now, Tom?
I will make a motion to accept the amended language.
Thank you.
Second, Oliver.
Second, Jack.
I heard Oliver first on that one.
Yep.
And then, is everybody clear on what this is, what this is about?
I am.
Yes.
Oh, okay, so I guess we're ready for a vote.
Okay, Tom?
Yes.
Lenny?
Yes.
Oliver?
Yes.
Jack?
Yes.
Diane?
Yes.
And Crystal?
Yes.
Motion passes 6-0. So here's the last one, guys. Uh, 280 dash 16 dash 7.20, point 2, maintenance agreement. The recommendation is that the standard is met with condition. The explanation is that with the condition that a maintenance agreement specifying the rights and responsibilities of the owner with respect to the maintenance, repair, and plowing of the private way, this standard will be met.
Motion to accept.
Second, Crystal.
And a roll call vote.
Tom?
Yes.
Lenny?
Yes.
Oliver?
Yes.
Jack?
Yes.
Diane?
Yes.
And Crystal?
Yes.
Motion passes 6-0. Um, just a second, would you like me to read the draft motion, Mr. Chair?
Yeah, that sounds like a good idea.
Okay. The planning board accepts the information in the February 26, 2021 summary report and the March 2nd, um, 2021 site plan review committee recommendation grants requested waivers and fines with the proposed minor site plan and private way application file R12 dash 45A to construct a private way to access one residential home. Excuse me. Let me change that. Um, I think what we're saying is to access two residential homes, or two homes, um, two residences. So the new line is, two residential homes to be served by overhead utilities and onsite, onsite water supply and septic disposal facilities on property owned by Robin and Cecile, is it Cecil or Cecile? I'm sorry, Cecile, I think, uh, Paula Quinn and located at 336 Alfred Road in Sanford has satisfied the requirements of Article 16 of the zoning ordinance subject to the submission of information and conditions described below. One by March 17, 2021 unless other arrangements are made with the planning director, provide five copies of revised plans to the planning department that adequately respond to issues raised in the review which are part of the following conditions of approval. A, revised sheets one, C301 and C300 to amend typos, notes, and mistakes as described in the Director of Public Works whose, um, February 22, 2021 memo. B, to revise plan notes naming the private way be approved by E911 addressing officer, the code enforcement officer. Two, that road condition, road construction not be allowed in the winter months to the satisfaction of the city engineer. Three, that the private way and hammerhead turnaround be maintained and kept clear year round to provide access for emergency vehicles. Four, to set up a pre-construction conference with the code enforcement director and the city engineer. Five, to provide an AutoCAD submission tied to the main state coordinate system which is acceptable to the city engineer. Six, to provide a cost estimate to the city engineer to establish the amount of the required performance guarantee. The applicant will then provide the planning department with one original hard copy and two additional hard copies of a performance guarantee in the amount established by the city engineer. Seven, after private way construction is complete, provide a PE stamped letter to the city stating that the private way has been constructed per City of Sanford standards and the approved site plan. Eight, I think it's gonna go away, hold on a second. Yeah, then we're gonna delete all of what was in the draft motion for eight because I think we've resolved that those permits are not required. Um, and so the new eight will be to establish an inspection escrow fee with the public works department in an amount acceptable to the city engineer. Nine is if installation of approved landscaping is not completed by September 15, 2021, the end of the growing season, the applicant shall be required to provide a performance guarantee in an amount to cover the cost of the landscape material and its installation. The guarantee shall be required to stay in force for one full growing season after installation. And 10, this approval is dependent on and limited to the documents and plans contained in the application submitted and affirmed to by the applicant. No project plan or development previously approved by the planning board may be altered or modified without securing prior approval of the planning board in the form of an amendment, provided however that if at any time it becomes necessary or desirable to make modifications to the development, the planning director may approve minor modifications. If changes to the approved plan shall be provided to the planning department prior, any changes to the approved plan shall be provided to the planning department prior to construction to evaluate whether an amendment of the approval is required. The applicant shall be aware that non-compliance with this condition may require modification of construction elements that are not consistent with the approval, may delay release of all or portions of a performance guarantee, and may result in delay in receipt of an occupancy permit or a stop work order.
Motion to accept.
Second, Oliver.
Um, Beth, I, I don't mean to interject here. Um, so, um, if one or more dwelling units are built on a private way, um, further, uh, fire protection is required, those homes. I don't know how the driveway that connects these two residences would apply to that. Um, Patrick did not interject at the site plan review committee, but I think it should be noted that his staff summary memo did only include the one, uh, proposed residence. Um, I, like I said, I, I don't know how this would apply to the situation, but I just wanted to make everyone aware of that, um, just in the event that this might have to come back if, if Patrick were to have any issues with it.
Um, okay, can I make a comment to that? Uh, I think Patrick made a comment directly to that is there's a fire hydrant, uh, within a thousand feet of at least this property. It's at the intersection of High Street and Route 4. And I think he was, he was, he made a statement that that would be the fire protection for this, this property.
So what I might offer, um, as a way to get us through this this evening, um, is that we add,
I can verify that in just a second. If you just give me a minute, I can verify that.
Yeah, sure.
Um, I'm gonna make an alternative suggestion. Rather than doing this on the fly without the fire marshal here and, and Patrick was not at the site plan review committee meeting yesterday. So my alternative recommendation is that we add a new condition um, that just simply says that the applicant will confirm, um, uh, with the fire marshal that no additional, uh, will discuss whether additional fire protection measures are required with the fire marshal. Would that work for folks?
So in that event, they wouldn't have to come back to, they wouldn't have to come back to the planning board, is that correct?
Right, unless Patrick required a physical modification in the layout, um, or the hammerhead, um, he may come back and say, oh, that the building's got to be sprinkled. That would be between him and the applicant at that stage because the condition would be that, um, whatever would be required to meet the fire marshal's concerns would be addressed. If he doesn't have any concerns, then it's, it's a condition that won't, do, won't require any changes.
Matt, did you want to jump in for a second?
Yeah, according to Sanford GIS, there is a, a fire hydrant at the intersection of High Street and Alfred Road, which is Route 4. And if you just give me a second here, I can measure. Hold on, I gotta move my Zoom window. Hold on, I gotta move my Zoom window.
I just, I remember in past experiences, if there's more than one residence built on the private way, that the buildings are required to be sprinkled. Um, I could be wrong on that, but I do think that the added condition would eschew that.
The fire hydrant is approximately nine hundred and fifty feet to the north of the proposed private way.
Yeah, I guess I would recommend that you not try to figure this out on your own, because the fire code is relatively complicated, and there may be additional elements that we're not aware of that are based in the Sanford ordinance. Um, you know, we, there is a separate ordinance requirement for compliance with the fire code. Um, this generic condition would allow the, would allow Dana to have a conversation with the fire marshal, and the fire marshal could very readily say, no, there's no problems, don't worry about it. Or he could come back and say, yes, but you've got to do A, B, and C.
I'd just like to think that we're giving, you know, final approval for the project and why not setting the applicant up to come back in a few weeks and...
Right.
Have to deal with any unfinished business.
Right. And I think this would, would do that unless what Patrick requires involves an adjustment in the layout. Um, if it's a minor adjustment, we could handle that as a staff amendment. If it's something more significant, yes, it would have to come back to the planning board.
Hmm. Uh, just for a frame of reference, too, I'm, I'm not showing any water line on, on Route four Alfred Road in front of this property, nor on any of the side streets near it. But that water line appears to go up High Street and then turn north on Alfred Road. So it, uh, if, if it were to be sprinkled, I would say it would be a really onerous ask of a single unit dwelling.
Right, again, Matt, I'm suggesting we not try to sort this out, um, tonight. This is an issue that the fire marshal, um, is if the planning board approves this the way it is and, um, the folks go in for a building permit and it doesn't comply with the fire code, they're going to be told no. Um, it's a lot better off, I think, to let Patrick sort this out directly with the applicant. And you can either table the item and have them do that and come back, um, or you can, um, come up with a somewhat generic condition that simply requires consultation and the fire marshal sign off. It's going to, it's going to be required anyway. He's not going to sign off on the building permit if there are fire code issues that need to be resolved.
So if they have to come back to the planning, if they have to come back to the planning board, do they have, is there another cost for that?
No, no, that, well, technically, yeah, I guess it would be an amendment of the plan. So yes, there would be a cost for that.
All right, so maybe in that case, maybe we should table the item.
Uh, can, can I, I think, I don't think there's going to be an issue here, to be perfectly honest with you. I mean, I don't think Patrick's going to try to, going to make an existing home to make and try to sprinkle that room. So, and, and he's already, he's already approved the, the hammerhead turnaround. So, I mean, the only issue is the, the second home.
Yeah. I think he's going to get a little bit of a... If I could try this, this additional condition again and see if it addresses it, um, to work with the fire marshals to clarify whether additional fire protections are required and provide them, if required, to his satisfaction.
It looks like Matt's attempting to talk to Patrick Carter, is that what he's trying to do?
I really would recommend that we not do that. I mean, Patrick needs to be part of the meeting in order to participate.
Right.
Um, this would, this would let the applicant get what they need and still protect the city.
Okay, in an event that they have to come back, is there any way we can waive the fees?
No, that's not allowed under the ordinance.
Okay, I just don't want to...
One quick question, Beth, I mean, if, if, if it's a minor change, is it something staff can approve?
Yes, there is still a fee for staff amendments. Um, it's a hundred and fifty dollar fee. If you have to go in front of the planning board, it's a three hundred dollar fee.
Right. I, I think you're...
That's the thing.
Your condition is...
Matt, I, uh, Mr. Chair, I know Matt wants to say something. I know he did not hear my comment while he was off talking with Patrick, but...
I, you can have to take my word on this one, but Patrick says it's a single family home, and he's got no jurisdiction as far as requiring a sprinkler in it. Sorry.
Again, I really think that I...
And we're not approving a home, we're approving a driveway, a private road, right? This is a private road, not a house.
Yep.
So all really Patrick is going to weigh in on here is can they move equipment in there, right? For a private road? Not, not talking about the house, not talking about sprinklers, we're talking about a road.
And again, I can't answer that question. The fire code is inches and inches and inches thick, and there are lots of intricacies in it. Um, and I have tried to second guess Patrick in the past, and I have, I've not been happy with the, with the results.
I'm agreeing with you, Beth. I'm agreeing with you. Let's not worry about it, because this is a private driveway that we are just... That's what we're approving.
Beth, I agree with you, too. I just wanted to give you some, or the applicant some level of confidence.
Okay, so Dana's on, so Dana's on the line right there. You're speaking for the applicant right now? Are you, are you okay with this going forward?
Yeah, I'm okay, I'm okay with Beth's, uh, um, uh, comments, because, you know, I think I'm going to get the same result that Matt just did with, with Patrick.
I agree, I'm just trying to, I agree, I'm just trying to leave that door open. There's a possibility you might end up having to pay more money if this, if this has to go back to, uh, has to go back to the process again, that's all. It sounds like that's unlikely, so...
I, I, that's, that's my feeling, I think it's unlikely, so I'm okay with the amendment.
Yeah. Okay.
So I will resend my last, uh, motion and propose a motion for the amended, uh, amended language.
To include Beth's amendment, okay.
Yes.
Yeah, and I second that, Crystal.
Okay. Um, no discussion on that, we can take a roll call vote.
Trying to capture this, guys. Um, okay, uh, Tom?
Yes.
Lenny?
Yes.
Oliver?
Yes.
Jack?
Yes.
Diane?
Yes.
Crystal?
Yes.
Motion passes, um, six oh.
Good luck, Dana.
Thank you very much, have a good night.
Thank you, sir. Want to catch your breath for a minute, Beth?
No, I'm fine.
Okay. All right, so we're ready for the next item on our agenda, new business. I think it's a little business, new business. This file, ten dash twenty, I say it's going bad, twenty eight dash R. This is Eldridge Lumber here at William Savage of Acorn Engineering. Um, I think we're just, this is a reconsideration on something, is it, Beth?
No, um, uh, what's going on is that, um, the planning board, excuse me, the site plan review committee, uh, approved the, can't be the site plan review committee, but the planning board approved a major site plan to construct the retail hardware and lumber store that Eldridge Lumber owns at seventeen eighty seven Main Street. Um, and there was a staff amendment on April third, twenty twenty. So there is a section of the ordinance, two eighty dash sixteen dash ten, that says that you must start construction, a substantial start of construction, within one year of approval. Um, and that has been done. Um, however, it also says that you must, um, receive an occupancy permit within three years. What the applicant is asking for is a three-year extension, um, uh, so that they can, um, they will not lose their, uh, site plan approval, even though they have got substantial start of construction. They do not anticipate having, um, completing that construction for occupancy um, within the three-year timeframe. And so they're asking for some ability to extend it a bit further. Um, I know that, uh, Will Savage is here, and you may want to specifically talk with him about that. Um, and, um, I, that's all I have to say at this point. Um, it's a relatively straightforward, um, request or an extension. You may have some, you know, clearly, everybody is reeling from the pandemic, um, and you may just want to talk with him specifically about why they're asking for this extension.
Okay, and again, this is new business, right? So this is a public hearing?
Uh, no, there's no public hearing on this. This is just a straight, uh, planning board action.
Okay. All right, Will, did you want to speak for a couple minutes, or?
Um, yeah, just happy to answer any questions. Good evening, members of the board. My name is Will Savage with Acorn Engineering. Um, we're just looking for a little bit of flexibility on, on that end date. Um, we have, all the permits are in place. Uh, D P, we, um, you know, continue, we've met all of the, the conditions of approval uh, that were outlined within the original, uh, uh, planning board approval letter. Um, so we're just, you know, given the, the market conditions, we're, we're just looking for a little bit of flexibility that way. And, um, also with us here tonight is, is Dan Remick, um, from Eldridge Lumber. So happy to, uh, answer any questions, thank you.
I'm actually good, I don't have any questions. Um, does anybody on the planning board have any questions?
No questions.
Everybody shaking their head now?
Oh.
I guess that's a good sign, isn't it?
Okay.
Okay, um, I guess we can go right to a vote on this.
I, I've got something to add.
I'm going to make a motion first.
Okay, yeah, Matt, Matt, did you want to make a comment before we...
Oh, okay, I'm a little bit confused. Is this the, you said it was on Main Street, this is down, uh, south of Jagger Mill?
This is right across from the old Cyro Plan, I believe.
Yeah, oh, I just, I just want to let you know, Will, that, uh, it's on Main DOT's list this year to do Colden Place overlay on one oh nine.
Thank you, appreciate that, heads up.
Yeah, but that's a, that's a full, um, like, removal of the pavement and, uh, new pavement.
Okay.
So there'll probably be a moratorium on it afterwards.
Right.
Well, saying it was a moratorium means they won't be able to do any digging into, basically, the Main Street, right?
Uh, moratorium, moratorium means that, uh, you can dig it, but it will be, they will make you chase each side at least twenty feet away from the outer edge of your excavation. So it turns into like a ten-figure bill when you, when you dig into moratorium, and, and they don't like to approve it unless it's an emergency.
Yeah, the alternative is, is that we would install the utility stubs ahead of time. Correct, so that's, uh, very good feedback, thank you.
Is there any coordination to make sure that they get that information before DOT comes in? Can they be informed so that they have time to get the utility work done?
Uh, it's on Main DOT's three-year work plan, which is advertised publicly. Um, yeah, they have long linear projects, I'm sure they don't notify all of others. So I think, you know, this is a good forum to have that kind of discussion, so I'm glad we have it.
Yeah, so should, should they be in contact directly with DOT then, so they get kind of a heads up? Maybe they can get the work done?
Yeah.
Who would they contact?
Uh, you can reach out to Main DOT Region One, uh, their number is two oh seven eight eight five seven thousand. And, uh...
Yeah, we, we work routinely with, with Region One, so, right, I'll reach out to my contacts there, thank you.
All right, okay, sounds like we're all set, Beth. Jack, did you have any comments? Jack is good, okay.
Uh, only question, only question I have is what is the date we're approving? All I see is through April twenty twenty three. We have an exact date?
I don't, I don't think so.
I believe it was April third, twenty twenty three.
Would go back to the, uh, date of the original approval, Tom, and it would, would tie to that date.
It'll be three years from the date of the approval, which was August seventh, twenty nineteen, so we'd go August seventh, twenty twenty three.
Uh, actually, you go to the first date, um, hold on. So the project was approved, uh... The project was approved on August seventh, uh, twenty nineteen. Um, and so three years from that would be, um, twenty twenty two. So three more years from that would take it out to twenty twenty five.
But they're not asking for that, they're asking for twenty twenty three. For this memo, for this memo, we request an extension approval through April twenty twenty three.
Yep, got it, thank you. Yeah, so it would be, and it's right in the memo, with August seventh, twenty twenty three.
Motion to accept the new date of twenty twenty three for occupancy permit.
Second, and Diane.
We've got the second, um, Lenny?
Sounds like Diane got in there first. So I guess we can vote on that.
Tom?
Yes.
Lenny?
Yes.
Oliver?
Yes.
Jack?
Yes.
Diane?
Yes.
And Crystal?
Yes.
Motion passes six oh.
Great, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
You're welcome. Have a good rest of the night.
Have a good night.
Good night.
Okay, so the rest of the items, make sure I get this right. The rest of the items on our agenda are going to stay... Are we doing Redline agenda, are we doing Redline? That's staying on the table, right?
It's going to stay on the table.
Okay, so the Redline properties, uh, the Inventures, Costa Loaks, Midtown Mall, the rest of the items are going to stay on the table until, uh, such time as if they're ready to go forward. And I guess that brings us to the planning director's report.
And so actually, relevant to that issue, um, the site plan review committee, um, at yesterday's meeting, and, and Jack was there, please, Jack, uh, step up and, and correct me or add anything you'd like here, um, expressed, um, some frustration about, um, the four items on the agenda having remained on the agenda, um, for the last several meetings. And in fact, some of them have been on the agenda, like Redline only for a month, have been, have been tabled for a month, and others have been tabled for as much as four and a half months. Um, and, uh, uh, so the plant, the site plan review committee is recommending that the planning board, um, establish a deadline, um, for how long these items can remain on the table unless there's, uh, really good reasons for why they should remain on the table. Um, and, um, uh, that would then be communicated back to the applicant, and they would be given a deadline by which they would have to provide revised materials and come back to the planning board for discussion. And one case is the site plan review committee. Um, and that, uh, should those, uh, should they not submit revised materials, the applications would be brought forward to the planning board or the site plan review committee in the case where they're doing one review, um, for the, the organizations to take, uh, for the committees to take action. Uh, presumably, they would be denied, uh, because of the material that is required to be submitted has not been submitted, and therefore you can't get clean comments coming out of staff review. Um, uh, I have put, um, the various applicants on notice that the board was going to, uh, be, uh, presented with the site plan review committee recommendation this evening, and, uh, told that if they had a concern about that, that they may want to come to the meeting or participate in some way. Um, there was no specific... Um there was no specific deadline um suggested uh in the communication that I had with those applicants. Um however, the Site Plan Review Committee did recommend on um and one, we notify them about a deadline that it be about a three month deadline, a three month deadline, which should provide ample opportunity uh for applicants to be able to complete their applications and submit them for review so that they can get heard at the at the Site Plan Review Committee or the planning board and the planning board. Um Jack, did you wanna add anything to that?
No, that pretty much sums it up. It's just some of these have been on there for months and there's been no action whatsoever. So at some point, they need to drop off our agenda.
I agree. I think that's, this is long overdue, or I think something, there should be, you know, deadline somewhere. Honestly, I think ninety days is being very generous. If it was me, I would make it a little bit shorter.
And I'm sorry, this is Crystal. These items are um overlapping each agenda because they're missing information? I'm just trying to make sure I understood you correctly.
Yep, um so there are four different applications and uh two of the cases um actually in um in all four of the cases, the applicants have been given specific um um feedback about what is even missing from the plan um in nonconformance with ordinance standards. Um in one case, um I know that the applicant um was told or the consultant was told that the plans were illegible um in many places, uh because there was just too much information on the plans that that sometimes happens. Uh people try to avoid using multiple sheets um because it's more expensive. Um but at some point, you kind of cross the line on how much information can be provided on a single sheet of paper and still have it be legible. Um in other cases, um uh in one other case, they had to go back and actually do some um additional um hydrogeologic investigations. And I know in that particular case, it was really tricky to line up a consultant to do the work. Um most of the consultants out there right now are kind of booked to the max, um and so it is hard to get in line. Um uh but in other cases, I think it simply has been a lack of experience. Um and the fact that they've not hired um qualified consultants to manage their project and they've been trying to manage them themselves and have not been terribly successful in uh responding to the requirements uh basically to meet the code. Um uh so there's a, there's a variety of reasons, um uh. There, the ordinances is not really, it it's kind of silent about what do you do in a situation like that? Um we try as best we can to continue to maintain contact with those applicants and and encourage them and, you know, provide um, you know, additional copies of things that were were provided to them previously and to get them focused on um communicating more clearly back. Um uh in some cases, um arguments are made that, you know, you know, we've been a little slow in responding. And in some cases, that is the case. Um um you know, it has been challenging to um maneuver the changes in personnel that a number of our departments are facing right now, um working short staff, working with people who are being trained. Um so there's a whole variety of reasons here, and I I don't think that the intention was to say anybody um um is acting irresponsibly. I don't think that's what's going on. I think we're just trying to get some clarity here about when can we expect to receive these materials? Um and then holding folks accountable to meeting those deadlines unless there is a another good reason for why it should be extended again. You know, I I do take into consideration, if you're trying to reach a specialized consultant and they are just simply booked for months, uh for several months, which I know is the case in one of these applications, um you know, that's a legitimate excuse um to why things should take longer. In other cases, I really think it's that they simply did not, they thought they could pull it off themselves. Um and I know that that's the case in at least two of these, and we have tried, we've had repeated meetings, multiple staff meetings um with the applicants um to talk with them about the changes on the plans, um and they need, you know, they need to be followed through after those meetings. Um so we've put a considerable amount of time into um uh into um helping as best we can um short of doing the applications for them, which we're not allowed to do. Um and so I I think at this stage, um you know, there is an interest in moving some of these applications forward one way or another. Um if they're not ready, if they've gotta gather more resources, then the item should be withdrawn and they should submit a new application when they're ready. Um.
Hi, Diane, did you get your hand up?
I'll let Beth finish.
Okay.
No, I was gonna say, you know, the, you know, the, I know that, you know, there's an issue about costs, and we're all counting our pennies these days. Um but there are a set of rules, um and to the degree that the board and and staff can waive some of those rules, we we try to do that. Again, we try to be as helpful as possible, but we cannot do the work for the applicants. We're simply not allowed to do that under the law.
Okay, thank you for clarifying. I appreciate that.
You're welcome.
Hi, Diane.
Yeah, um with the exception of one that I see on this list, I think three months is sufficient. I'm sorry, you sink or you swim. Um if you can't do it, then get the help. I understand pandemic uh financial costs, but uh three months is enough in my book.
Does this, does this have to be an ordinance or is something we vote on? How does that work?
So I, if you want to make this, uh I I think it would be useful to be clear about what the expectations are. Um you cannot go in and develop those rules after the fact. The applicants have submitted under the current rules and those are the rules that govern. You can, however, say that, uh and you've done this in the past, um that uh we need to talk with you. Um and uh and, you know, we've been waiting patiently to talk with you. We can't get a recommendation from the Site Plan Review Committee because they say they don't have um the information they need to be able to make a recommendation. So no, you can't boot them out. You can bring them forward and you can take action.
Well, let's bring them forward then. We've, we've done it before.
So I have uh I have a question on this. If, uh and I remember a handful of these came to us uh as a, hey, heads up, the Site Plan Review Committee couldn't make a recommendation, but we're gonna let you hear it anyways. Uh if the Site Plan Review Committee can't make a recommendation, it shouldn't even come to us.
Well, it's because of the public hearing schedule.
Well, but can we not say that the public hearing has been canceled? Because now we're left here holding, trying to keep book on all of these that are not even moving at all, and we're having this discussion. Yeah, I I understand that we're gonna get the public involved, but if it's not ready to be heard, it shouldn't be heard. Just my thought.
So it gets a little complicated um because we have to pay um for the advertisement for the public hearing. Um uh and uh in order to keep up the pace that the city would like to have for processing applications in order to be business friendly, we have to advertise um before the Site Plan Review Committee meeting. Otherwise, you're talking about a Site Plan Review Committee uh meeting and then tabling an item for or not bringing it to the planning board for another two weeks, because that's what we essentially need to be able to get the advertisement and meet the advertising schedule. Um so we do that. You certainly can ch- cancel the public hearing. Um that would put the burden of re-advertising on the city because we do not directly charge the applicant for the advertisement. Um it's part of the appi- application fee. Um uh so that's the first issue. The second issue is that if people do show up to the public hearing, um uh wouldn't you rather hear what they have to say rather than sending them home? Um I mean, I, and that's not a decision for me to make. That's a decision for you to make. But it's been in the spirit of not wanting to disadvantage people who've taken the time to come and participate. It used to be a lot more serious when you had to come down to City Hall. I mean, now you can sit in your living room and call in. Um but it is still, um you know, you we put people on notice. The only way to get around those two issues is to stretch out the review time and essentially double it. Um and so my understanding was that the city was trying not to do this, that. So um that's why we've been moving those items forward for public hearing.
But with the public hearing, they also notify the abutters of the property so that they can come to the meeting and either forward or against it, just to find out what's going on.
So are, uh does the public get notified of all of these on the agenda every two weeks? And all of the abutters get notified that it may be discussed every two weeks? Or do we not bring it back up until we're actually gonna talk about it again, then submitting another public release?
Yeah, it, they don't get follow up. Um the idea is that it's carried forward, so they would pay attention to it. I have to say that on occasion, um when it's been extremely long delay and we knew that there were um uh there were a number of people who were interested in this, um we do try to do a follow up with them. Usually, it's not through a formal abutters letter, but you know, they've come forward and they've made it known, either because they testified or they sent in comments or they raised questions. We do try to let them know, um usually via email, that the item's coming back up on the agenda. And then we provide the agenda so that they have the ability to call in if they'd like to.
So is everybody all right with the issue of instituting some kind of a uh definite period? A thirty days, um maybe not thirty days, but sixty days or ninety days? My preference would be for sixty days. Only because sitting on the planning board for the last six or seven years, I've seen this happen quite a few times, so this is not a new phenomenon. I mean, it's been.
So by taking them off, by taking them off the list, what does that mean? Does that mean they go, they start the whole process over again?
So they wouldn't be kicked off the list, Tom. That's the point. They'd have to come forward for um the planning board or in one case, the Site Plan Review Committee would simply take action. And, you know, you make your choice. You make your choice about whether you're going to approve, approve with conditions or deny. Um it's very, very rare that San, I've never seen Sanford deny an application. Um uh.
Oh, yeah, we did once.
Right, but within, I've never seen it, but yes, I've heard about the one that was denied. Um so, you know, essentially, it would come forward and they'd make their case about why they think their application is adequate. Um and you would either be convinced and have affirmative statements and your findings are fact or you would say they can't make those findings, and if you can't make those findings, then um you would vote to deny. If it was a denial, then they, yes, they would have to submit a new application. Um I'm thinking, though, that simply telling, you know, giving people a reasonable amount of time, a very reasonable amount of time um and putting them on notice um that this is gonna happen if we don't hear from you. And if they come back again and they've got the good reasons for why um the deadline should be extended, um I think there's the opening for that. But um uh somehow, the planning department just sort of um pressing these folks or individual staff people pressing these folks to resolve the issues that have been raised hasn't been uh responded to in a way that we could bring this to closure. Um and you can tell, I'm trying to pick my words very carefully here. Um uh it's not like, you know, it's not like we don't talk to each and every one of these applicants periodically. Um you know, but frankly, there's nothing in our system that automatically generates this. We have to remember and put ourselves in a position of reaching out to them, which we do. Um but it has not moved uh a couple of these applications very far at all.
Hi, Matt, do you have a hand up?
Yeah, uh you know, just my two cents, uh some of my background is from like the larger development world. Uh I think the largest project I've ever worked on was like an eighteen million dollar roadway. Uh but also, just to give you a frame of reference, like the signals that we installed down at uh one oh nine at Old Mill, uh that took us four years uh to get done. So I I guess in in that, and I and I know that didn't come through the planning board. But, you know, I I would just try to encourage you to consider like the complexity of a project when putting on a deadline like that. I think there are some projects that are huge that if Sanford was so lucky, they wouldn't wanna have to, you know, deal with that kind of deadline. Um and I think maybe one was discussed at council on on Tuesday night. But um uh I I agree, like most projects should be able to turn around comments on things relatively quickly. But just sometimes there's other things that get in the way. Um not that, it it it's excuses, but it, sometimes it's a real thing.
But it seems like most of the huge projects, they actually hire professionals that know what they're doing and they come in with all their i's dotted and t's crossed. It's the little, little guys that we have trouble with.
So here's a question. Oh, sorry, go ahead, Matt.
Oh, and the the big ones have capacity to get them done on time.
So my question is, what do other neighboring towns who have planning boards, what are their guidelines or procedures that they follow? You know, it's maybe something as for a a point of reference.
I don't know, Crystal. You know, I certainly can research that for you if you'd like.
I don't know if I, I mean, if others are are curious as well, I think that would be great. But I don't know if you exerting your time to answer that question is really worth your time.
I think that's a reasonable, that's a reasonable question, I think. It's nice to know what other people are doing.
So I can research that if you want me to spend time on it. Um uh it's it's um I won't have an answer for you until our next meeting, probably, um if you wanna delay this discussion further until then.
I think that's reasonable.
Yeah, I don't wanna talk about this all night either.
Right. Well, I think that there's a lot of variables, as you had mentioned earlier, Beth, and that we won't be able to come up with any definitive answers tonight anyways. But for the time being, we could um think about this until our next meeting. I think that's doable.
Okay. So that's it for my report. Um uh uh we're hoping by um the time we come to the next um um planning board meeting that we will have um uh completed interviews and made an offer to hire a new administrative assistant and uh bring that person on board as soon as possible. And if we do so, um you know, some of the stickiness around some of these things might um resolve. Um but I I do wanna do a call out and uh in and um note that uh Molly has been the real trooper uh stepping in and assuming a a lot of the roles of an administrative assistant. Um um which is, as you can imagine, you know, has added to sort of a workload pretty dramatically. Um I guess the only other thing I wanted to say in the Planning Director's Report is um um is to call out um Matthew Progentsher, who is our new Assistant City Engineer. And on, apart from that, I know that. And, um, apart from that, I know that Matt Hill could probably provide an introduction, and I would hope that you would welcome Matthew. And I'm only calling him Matthew, oh, he changed his name. Oh, good. I've been calling him Matthew and Matt Hill Matt, and then they, they swapped their names on their, on their Zoom lists or nestings. We can call him Matt P. and Matt H. if you want, or however else you'd like to abbreviate. Um, but, you know, it is, it is, uh, serving as a good line of joviality in the office around this. But with that, I'll stop. Welcome Matthew for me. And Matt, do you wanna provide, just Matt. I love it. Um, do you wanna provide a little introduction about, uh, um, about Matthew to the planning board?
Sure. Well, when Mike Casely announced his retirement, we started a search process, uh, advertising for a, a civil engineer, uh, fill Mike's shoes. Um, we put together a pretty like diverse job description and included, you know, some incentives in there to, to try to get somebody in the door who's both had experience and, uh, willing to learn. And Matt Provencher, uh, fit the bill. He's been working for a consultant, uh, Matt, I'm gonna butcher this one. You've been working for a consultant for like a decade. Uh, you live in North Berwick, but you were out of Massachusetts. And, uh, so, um, a- as we say in the public sector, you kind of come from the dark side, but a lot of times that's got a lot of advantages because you know what's going on. Uh, so I'll, I'll let you introduce yourself, please.
Yes, thank you. Uh, yeah, that's exactly it. I've got, uh, ten years of my old company, which is in the private sector in Massachusetts, so in the, uh, in the week and a half I've been here, it's, uh, been a lot of, uh, just putting the pieces together on how, how the other side works. So I, uh, I felt very welcome, and, uh, hopefully I can, I can be of use right away.
Welcome to Sanford.
Yes, welcome.
Welcome, welcome.
Welcome, Matt.
All righty. Are you all set, Beth?
I'm all set. Thank you.
Okay, um, I guess the next part of our agenda is, I can only see one screen at a time, communications. Um, I'll just bring up something real quick. Has the audio been all right? I've tried to do something different tonight. Am I breaking up, or am I sounding like R two D two or something? Oh, okay, great.
You sound clear.
Yay, so it must have been my old computer. Okay, thanks. Um, does anybody have anything else they would like to announce on the communications? Any announcements or comments? Nothing at all? Quiet out there. All right, so the next thing, yeah, go ahead.
I'm not sure who's talking, but you're garbled.
It was breaking up a little bit.
I think it was Crystal. She looks, uh, like, oh, there she is.
There she is.
Crystal, try again.
You're muted.
How about now?
That's good.
Okay, sorry. Um, I did lose internet connection. Sorry about that. Um, what I was saying before was I wanted to echo Beth's kudos to Molly. She's been such a rock star. So I really appreciated her going the extra steps for me the last few weeks.
Thank you, Crystal.
You're welcome.
Okay. If we're good, I guess we can adjourn and go to a very, uh, maybe an abbreviated work session?
We need a motion.
Yeah, I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Second.
Second, second, second.
Mr. Chair?
Jack has four, Jack has four hands up.
Yeah, Mr. Chair?
Give it to Jack.
I believe, um, Counselor Hanselman's on, and she wanted to join the work group.
Please do. Hang around for the fun. Okay. Um, all right, so we'll take the vote to adjourn.
Um, Tom?
Yes.
Lenny?
Yes.
Oliver?
Yes.
Jack?
Oh, yes.
Diane?
Yes.
And Crystal?
Yes.
Motion passes six oh.
Okay, we are adjourned and headed to a brief work session.